Will the clerk please call the rules?
Winters. Eckhart.
Here.
Hamilton. Stelling.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Sherman. Haniford.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
All right. Item four, swearing-in ceremony for Melody Thiedman, City Clerk. Melody, please. Bring it here.
As long as I don't have to sing the national anthem or something.
We did.
It's not we, you.
I know. I can sing, but probably not that. And I don't really feel like I need to.
If you were ready, you're right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that you will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and that you will not knowingly, receive correctly, or indirectly any money or other valuable thing for the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to your office, other than the compensation allowed by law? And do you further swear affirm you'll faithfully discharge your duties as City Clerk to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. We always have a race to see who signs the checks first. Sometimes Melody wins. Item five is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, and will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 15, 2019. Item B is approval of claims in the amount of $299,615.77, and payable expenses of Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Looked approved.
Had a motion by Councilman Eckhart, second by Councilman Stelling, to approve this consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please tell the vote.
Eckhart?
Here. Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Haniford?
Item seven, reports from staff. First report. Let's go with the ordinance review committee meeting from April 17, 2019. Randy, do you care to give us a quick report?
I'd love to, but I don't have my notes in this meeting, so I don't know. Chris?
I don't know if I can do that either.
Joe Don can.
Or Chris, he gets in there.
I guess that's kind of a miracle.
Well, basically, one of the main things that we had talked about during that was the updating of our weeds and our trash ordinance. Discussed a little bit on the fact that we're waiting on the new alcohol ordinance to get finished and being developed. And we talked a little bit about the abandoned vehicle ordinance and what kind of updates needed to be done. The board had, the committee had tasked staff with drafting new recommendations for both the weeds and trash and abandoned vehicle, to streamline that and hopefully make those a little bit easier and less time consuming, because as you know, right now, the way it's written, it's about a two-week timeframe between the first notice and us actually being able to get out and do anything on it, and see what we can do to shorten up that timeframe. And that would have been for both the weeds and trash and the abandoned vehicle.
Council have any questions? Thank you. Next item is personnel committee meeting on April 24th and May 16, 2019. Dr. Haniford?
Okay, from April 24th, we talked about some job code placements, also worked on some job descriptions and pay grades. Joe Don was working to clean up some language for the entry-level positions, especially with the different pathways for the skills to earn extra money. We also talked about some of the exempt status positions for our workers. We have, we talked about a team building training for our council and the department heads, which Joe Don has occurred, or will be coming up.
Will be coming up. We have not scheduled that time yet. After the surveys that we had put out, they had kind of indicated maybe less of a need for council, department head, more of just internal team building type.
Yeah, we did. We reviewed the survey and worked on a few of the questions that you did get to send out. On the last one, on the 16th, we talked a little bit about our FY19 priorities. We discussed a little bit, Joe Don gave us some preliminary numbers for COLAs, and we've asked him to bring forth some estimates from anywhere from a 1 to 2.5 percent COLA. We discussed some healthcare renewals, and feel like we have an opportunity to maybe save some money in our healthcare, which is not going to take really much away from our services for our employees. We, at that point, looked at the survey also for that team building training, and like Joe Don said, found that really just besides maybe some areas with some communication, felt that that went really well. We talked about some advertising and where we might want to do that more economically for the city here in Alva. And then we also had a discussion on employee recognition, which we voted on and signed. So if I could have Courtney come forward. Our award winner for the employee recognition program is Courtney Nazarela. We were really excited, surprised. So this came really from our first tournament that happened at the ARC Center, I think it was on April 20th. But a lot of comments that came back from a lot of the out-of-town teams, number one comments on how well the tournament was run, how nice our fields were, our facilities, and how much they enjoy coming to Alva to play, which is not only, you know, good for our city, but we couldn't do that without Courtney and her staff out there. Obviously, the ARC provides a lot of great opportunities for our young people, but the economic impact that brings when we have those teams that want to come to Alva is really important for us. So Courtney, we'd like to present this to you. And congratulations. Oh, you bet.
Pardon?
And I was supposed to read, okay, also that once selected, the employee of the month receives dinner for two to any of the restaurants the employee chooses.
In Alva.
In Alva. And also movie tickets for two at the Rionto Theater, and eight hours of special vacation. So congratulations again.
Thank you.
He will see tomorrow what restaurant you want to go to, and I will.
And you get a two.
Yeah. What restaurant you want to go to, and I'll buy the gift certificate for you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And that is my, that's your quarter report. And does anybody else have questions? There you go.
I'll just take, oh, good, everybody. Thank you for everything you do, Courtney, and your whole family gets involved out there, and I know that, and we appreciate all of you, and you need to do a little bit better job of making sure it doesn't rain.
Yeah.
But other than that, you're doing incredible.
That's up to the weed harvest.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next item is the Alva Public Library Board meeting on May 6, 2019.
Okay, most of our meeting was in dealing with technical or updates, things that need to be done at the library, we talked about. All of the computers have to be updated to Windows 10 by next January in order to properly operate all the computer system. During the process of doing that, they've replaced Director's computer and some others using state aid funding that's going to help programs and everything operate better. Big issue we talked about was the air conditioning system, both for the basement and the roof, both need to be replaced. This seems to be kind of a annual summer tradition anymore. So they're looking at getting quotes, and they would like to replace the units for when the summer's over with, looking at some possible different types of wiring or different types of air conditioning to maybe be more both efficient and longer lasting. We were approved for E-rate funding for paying for internet services. They did have some successful financial fitness seminars. They did several of those, and they turned, they had some good attendance at those. Summer reading programs begin a week from Monday, first Monday in June. There's multiple different things that the students can do, so if you have a kid that wants to do that or something, you can go to the library and get that information, or you can go to their Facebook page, and they have all that signup information on there as well. They're also doing a Lego club and a special summer coding club, too, where they code games and computer stuff. So those are going to be, and they pretty much have something for everybody of almost all ages, kids. And the last thing we talked about was, well, two more things, sorry. One thing we talked about was doing some sort of memorial to honor Larry Thorne, who recently passed away, longtime director of the Alva Public Library. Various library groups had talked together, going together to fund the memorial, friends of the library, library itself, private donations, public donations, lots of different. And then we talked about several different ideas, nothing at this time to discuss on those. And then we will, this will happen later on this meeting, but we are going to have a new board member appointed for next month's meeting, as Dr. Kaborvik resigned from the board after many years, yeah, so.
Does the council have any questions? Thank you, Chris. Next item on the agenda is the Alva Arena Authority meeting for May 7. You can see in the packet, the meeting minutes from that, it does look like they're considering their options for bid alternatives and add-ons regarding the scope of the design. They're also working to move forward to figure out the management they're going to use to operate out there. And they're also working with bond attorneys and looking for other ways to identify funds to accomplish what the needs are going to be. Do you may have any questions? Thank you. Next item is the Recreation Complex Board meeting for May 8. Randy's not here. Joe Don, would you like to?
That was a pretty prime meeting, mostly just discussion on approval of minutes and act, financial statements. They did approve a recommendation on the budget for the ARC for next budget year, and they approved the annual ARC memorandum of understanding with NWSU for the soccer field and softball fields for the next budget year. And that would have been everything that they took care of.
Does the council have any questions? Next item is the Strategic Anguish Task Force meeting from May 9, 2019. Randy?
Mr. Steve Ward came up, and he had input, was it like a map of the properties, and now that we're able to somewhat identify the smaller properties that would be, well, they're all basically out of clients now that still remain because they need to be sized. We discussed different square footage options for the different zonings. We're working on, he's supposed to give me some, oh, the, like definitions of the different zonings and what they entail as far as descriptions and stuff. Soon as he can give me that, then we're going to try to call another meeting, and then we would go through those and see if there'd be something that's out of date, or yet we want to include in some of those areas in Maryland. So I believe he had wanted us to try to do that before he came back, and I think he'd want to come back towards the end of June in Maryland, and thought maybe, kind of thought like maybe, thought we could maybe decide something, have a little something maybe to bring to council, maybe to draw a, as far as some of the changes, and try to kind of descriptions, I believe, and kind of work our way through it instead of hitting everything all at once.
Council have any questions? Thank you, Randy. Next item is the Alva Board of Justice meeting, May 13.
That meeting was, there was one item, there was a public hearing and discussion on a conditional use permit for Jeffrey and Sandra Cohen at 416 Logan Street. They wanted to put in a manufactured home, and that was, that was approved. And that was the only, that was the only discussion and action Alva that board had that evening.
Does the council have any questions? Next item is the Alva Regional Airport Commission meeting on May 13. We had our regular routine business of reports from the airport manager and city council We looked at and approved for recommendation, the recommended for the fiscal year 2019, We also had a brief discussion on the courtesy car policy. The policy was updated a couple of years ago, and it did question whether or not we needed to start requiring payment to use the courtesy car for anybody that didn't purchase fuel. We ultimately determined that it's not something that is taken advantage of very frequently, so we're going to continue to monitor it, and if we have problems in the future, we'll look at the policy again at that time, but at this time, we didn't have any changes for that. And then that was the only business we had to discuss. Happy to answer any questions. Next item is the Department of Buildings Committee meeting on May 14. Chris, read.
Yes, okay, okay. We had several discussions, the primary discussion being swimming pool discussion. I don't know how much I'm supposed to say about that, so I don't know. We talked about several options going forward with our public swimming pool, which I believe will be part of another meeting at a different point in time, correct? We're going to have it on Monday, but we had to reschedule it. So lots of different ideas and thoughts going forward. Obviously, lots of public discussion and things like that will need to occur in regards to what we do going forward with that. We talked, we looked at several different options, and then, you know, we've even seen different options since that point, so that's a good thing. We discussed, there are some HVAC issues in the professional building, the possibility of repairing those, as well as the library, which I mentioned earlier. And then there are some, some roof issues on the professional building that need to be addressed, which are only, I'm certain, being made worse by the constant amount of rain we have been getting. So those are some things that will need to be addressed at a point in time. We talked about, was brought to our attention about the possibility of a dog park. Some citizens had mentioned that would be something that they were interested in. That was just a preliminary discussion on some ideas and thoughts on that. And then we also talked about the possibility for a policy for the pavilion usage in the park, the two large areas that people tend to use for parties. Some citizens expressed concerns or interest in having kind of a signup or a reservation sort of determination, which we didn't really come to a full decision on that one at this point in time. So that was pretty much the majority of our meeting.
Good luck. You got it, Joe.
Does the council have any questions? Next item is the Alva Tourism Tax Commission meeting on May 15, 2019. Connor?
I did this down, I think. It's a bit easier than normal meeting. There were five items that came across. They were all fully funded. Coach Walter was here for the Northwestern Golf Tournament. Each item did come across as a previously funded event. Northwest Alumni Junior Rodeo Association, Coach Paul with the Alva High School, the summer baseball tournament, the Fourth of July spectacular, and then the Alva Fire Department Mutt Slinger Shootout. Were the events all requested the same amount as the year before? We did make some recommendations to them in terms of looking at two-day events to draw in more people at hotels, things like that. Longer than normal, but pretty much routine.
Does the council have any questions? Next item is the Alva Municipal Cemetery Board Special Meeting on May 16, 2019.
There were really only two action items on that agenda. One was the discussion and action to approve a recommendation on an FY19-20 budget, which was done. Then the second item was to approval to allow the fire departments to perform a controlled burn. The cemetery board passed a policy a year or two back about them approving every time this happens, or this is needed, and again, what controlled burn is needed to help control the overgrowth in some of the undeveloped areas, plus to remove some of the tree stumps that are, where they've been cut down, so the area can be improved and platted. And that was approved. Has not happened yet, but it was approved. Those were the only two action items on that agenda.
Does the council have any questions? I will point out that Memorial Day services will be out there at the pavilion at the cemetery at nine o'clock on Monday.
And I have to say that there's been overwhelming, a lot of requests, or I should say, to have the cemetery sexton on site on Memorial Day, and he will be.
Okay, next item is the Finance Committee meeting on May 3 and May 23, 2019. Phil?
Similar items. I don't want to review our claims list from this meeting, but we reviewed and signed our claims list. Some of the large purchases, general fund, we had demolition of a little over $10,000, which is a couple of our dilapidated houses or buildings we took care of, bulk fuel, which was about $28,000. Airport, of course, we had bulk fuel of $31,000. Debt services, AEDA of $14,000, almost $15,000. And same thing on AUA, $58,000, a little over $58,000. We also discussed, we had a presentation from Dr. Pecky on the NWSU bill that will hear tonight. I'll let Joe Don cover the finance bill. The ONG franchise, if you remember, we did go back and basically got the things that we asked to get changed within that agreement, and that will be brought up in our next regular meeting to be voted upon. We discussed the swimming pool and the possible geo-bond issue that we'll continue to have another public hearing, and that'll probably occur during a special meeting in June. Bidding for our Skyline Sewer Lift Station should be going out very quickly, get the bids, that'll probably be on the special meeting as well in June. And then continued our discussion on the billing for fire runs. And then also talked about just some preparation for the upcoming FY20 budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions? Thank you, Phil. Next item is the Mayor's Report. The, a lot of stuff going on in town here lately. We've, of course, had a lot of graduations, we've had a lot of awards assemblies, we've had a lot of banquets and things of that nature, and it's, it's good to see the accomplishments of all the people, especially the young people in our community. Do want to point out a few events coming up. Connor mentioned a couple of them, but Neska Time to Arts Festival is going to be same day as the Northwestern Ranger Football Golf Tournament, same day as the Mutt Slinger Shootout. It is the 50th Neska Time to Arts Festival, I think?
Yes.
So should be welcoming, you know, hopefully quite a few people into town for that. And, I'm not sure. Happy to answer any questions? Joe Don, business manager report.
Well, some of just some of the managerial items that we've been, that have been participated in here lately, whereas did attend legislative issues meeting at OML on May 1. At that meeting, there were several bills discussed, and what the status of those bills were, and where we were at on. They were all priority bills that OML had slated at the beginning of the year. Also attended the OML Oklahoma Tax Commission Liaison Board meeting. During this meeting, we did, we discussed the use tax bill that was, that is going through legislation right now. There was some discussion over what municipalities could expect if they had medical marijuana sales tax collections. They also, we also discussed various other revenue programs that were out, that are out there, that we may be able to take advantage of. Some of the projects- Some of the projects that we've been working on, actively working on is the chlorination station. It is under construction. We are awaiting some equipment and a building for that, for that construction to be completed. Once that is in and it dries up a little bit, so we can get back out there to work, probably looking at a three-week timeframe to be completed with it. Then, also is a swimming pool. Obviously, at this point, we will not be making the May 27 typical opening day. We received in the equipment that we needed for enhanced chemical treatment and chlorination of the water yesterday. Staff is working to get that, that equipment installed, get the pool filled, and then we'll have the Oklahoma Department of Health come down and inspect the equipment and the pool one final time before, before the pool is able to open. Some of the issues that we've been, some of the areas where we've been working and some of the things that we've been taking care of. The customer service center has been, you know, doing their thing. Pretty much, they have taken and handled about 2,500 payments, with 197 of them being from credit card processing. We started the credit card processing a few months ago. It has been steadily picking up every month since then. This will, this will be a real good thing. This is a real good thing to help enhance our cash flow. The two main water projects that we're working on right now are the well field, to get that back up and running, and the sewer lift station that we are bidding out will be the two things that, two active things that we were working on. We've about, we've about completed the well, the well field work that we had slated for this year. We were waiting for a little bit of plumbing equipment and ability to complete wells 64 in 62 and 64, and they had to replace motors on wells 46, 54, and 72, so that we could be prepared for this summer. Sanitation, sanitation department's working, just doing routine stuff. We are waiting for it to dry up, and we may not be picking up limbs as quickly right now as what we should, we'd be, as quickly as they're getting put out. It's too wet, and the limb piles are just piling up, and the grass piles are just piling up, because both those areas are standing water. It is making it very difficult to get in there and try to get it cleaned up. Once the rain quits, we'll be able to get in there and start our chipper running again and get things cleaned up, and get that back on a normal schedule. The rec center, I think we talked a little bit about this today. One of the big things, I think, that we acknowledged, they had a baseball tournament that brought in, that they had a total of 26 teams, serviced 312 kids. They also had a softball tournament that had 18, 18 teams, or 17 teams for 156 kids. So had several scheduled, scheduled league games and youth soccer games, just a lot of activities during the month of April at the, down at the rec center. Did have the, during April, we also had the hosted, or co-hosted, the annual turkey hunt. As far as nuisances and things like that have been worked, several items there that you can go over. Human resources, Ron Vasquez was the second Employee Recognition Award, with Courtney being the third. We still are searching for a sanitation worker and two water workers now. We had another water worker quit recently, as well as grounds maintenance for parks and ARC. Streets, we finished up Fifth Street. Rains have pretty much held us back from starting anything else. Once the rains, this rain cycle moves out of here, we'll be able to pick back up, work on getting the streets that we have prepped ready to, ready to asphalt. First couple of streets that I know that we're working on will be Seventh Street in front of Washington School and Barnes along there in Washington School area. Fire department police activities are pretty normal, as with EMS activities. Financial, for the month of April, the general fund had expenses over revenues for the month of $128,355. Transfers to the general fund have not occurred yet. There are $2,790,000 worth of transfers budgeted. The AUA authority has a positive cash flow for the month of $89,870. Loans that we have, during the month of April, we made $581,000 worth of principal payments, $268,000 worth of interest payments. We have approximately $6.6 million in loans, with dates ranging from 7/1, 2019 to 9/15, 2048. Sales tax, in April, we had a really good month. It was up from March, $89,918, and up from April of last year of $118,000. For total, the total sales and use tax collections of $415,000. As far as May is concerned, it wasn't quite that good. We collected $361,000, which is a 53%, $53,000 decrease from last month, from the month of April. Utility billing is up about 12% from April at $286,000. Capital improvements, we've been working on again. The HVAC program is finished up. We're still working through street programs. The water distribution line, we've put off until after the summer. We do have, down back, we do have the freightliner, we can't pronounce it, say freightliner tractor that had gone down, a tractor that were for the sanitation department, one we had become unusable. There had, the fire rescue truck has been ordered, and I believe as of now, the walk-in refrigeration unit at the Homestead is complete. That would be my report at this time. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Council have any questions? Thank you, Joe Don. The next item is a presentation from NWSU over the 2019 spring semester Alvin Center Scholarship Program. Pete Burke.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As you can see, we're about 50% represented today. Time out about 3 o'clock, but we've got two people on the road, so if this had been happened Monday, like scheduled, we'd have more people here. So I wasn't planning to tell anything, because we had other people speaking, but I took this as an opportunity to share a couple of things that I would like to share. And it's going to seem like that the mayor and I kind of correlated this discussion, but you agree, we did not have a previous discussion.
Not yet.
Yeah, beforehand. We're talking about events, and I went to a couple of events this last, this last month that, that I want to share with you, the impact that it kind of hit me. The first one that I want to share with you is May 11, Northwestern's graduation. I go to a lot of graduations, as you might guess, at Northwestern, and that was one of the most wonderful graduations that I can remember. The weather was absolutely perfect, about 60 degrees, no wind. The crowd was huge, and I cannot remember a time when there was more student enthusiasm, not just for themselves, but for each other. It was just electric, and it was very wonderful. And I felt at the end that we must be doing something right here in Alba at Northwestern for that to happen. And then, the second event that I want to share with you is I went to the Alba High Awards Ceremony, which I don't go to every year. And that happened on May 9, and, and I don't, my numbers aren't precise, but what I got out of that, we had over $700,000 in scholarships awarded to about 69 students. It doesn't take a mathematician to figure out, that's about $10,000 per student. And those happen in big part because of the Alvin Center Scholarship, the Share Trust Scholarship, and the Gene Belcher Scholarship, and there's some other ones in there. And in a lot of those events, there's a lot of duplication, where one student will receive scholarships from OSU, OU, and they know that once they make a decision, a lot of those fall away, but that's not what happened here. Most of that is legitimate investments in higher education. And so, I Googled something, I want connection between education and wealth. I just, the first thing that popped up was an article, and I can't pronounce this guy's name, I'm going to do it wrong. It's like Sorba Das, and title of the article is Connection Between Education and Wealth. And I just kind of read through there, and there's a paragraph that I wanted to share with you that I thought would make sense for us. Says, "For our government, investment in education is one of the safest and surest ways to improve the economic condition of a country," and in this case, I think a city, "and a standard of living in low-income households and individuals. It also has other less obvious benefits, like lower crime rates and improved personal health." And if you think about what we have in Alba, a low crime rate, we have, you know, I talk to our doctors, they see these folks that are 90-plus all the time. We have a great community, and we're doing some good things, and I'm thinking, you know, if we can go from, the state average is about 25% to have a college education, if we can invest where 50% of our kids are getting college education, what's that going to mean for Alba in the long term? So I'm excited. And so, with that, I'm going to present, you have the bill in front of you for $236,589.43. I think it's a great investment in our future, and I appreciate your support up to this point. Any questions to me? I'm going to be followed by Dr. David Pekey. Skeeter's going to fill in for Dr. Haniford.
Thank you. I was reminded, as Dr. Haniford was talking earlier about the rec park and some of the comments that you had received back on behalf of the city. I have to go back and thank the citizens of Alba during the late 1990s, when the discussions talked about doing an economic incentive for the community, and half of that sales tax that goes to the rec park, and the other half goes to the university. Like Skeeter said, what better investment in our community, in our youth, than those two types of programs? So that was kind of ironic that tonight, the council hears from both, something that impacts, that wants it, sales tax, both on the rec park side and the university side. Follow-up, just a couple of other statistics to kind of follow up. Skeeter talked about the Alba High School Awards Program. Specifically for Northwestern that night, we awarded $218,000 to Alba High seniors. That's up for about $190,000 last year, we made offers to those students. Currently, we have 38 of the high school seniors enrolled at Northwestern for next fall. We have recruited six of the eight Alvictorians who have committed to Northwestern. Back last fall, we had our Ranger Preview Event. We had about 430 students attend that. That's the first offer that we make to many of those students, and that is funded with the Alvin Center Sales Tax. Last year, we received about 50% of those that attended that event ended up coming to Northwestern. This past spring, we held what's called the Spring Showcase. We had 123 students attend that event. A year ago, we had 97. That recruits both high school seniors as well as transfer students that may be looking at Northwestern in the fall. Our recruitment staff will work all summer. We continue to look at prospective students that will come to the university, and they've set as a goal to have our freshman class of about 400 students this fall. So we'll be monitoring that very closely. The last thing I want to share with you, the State Chamber did a survey of higher education and crunched quite a few numbers and put together some economic impact on what colleges and universities have in the state of Oklahoma. So I want to share with you a page that reflects Northwestern, and let you take this home with you. It gives you some of the information that I think is impactful to the community, and just shows you what impact both the university and our student enrollment has here in the community of Alba. I won't read all of this to you, but you can look at the chart on the left. It gives you the data that they've looked at. From fiscal year 16, they pulled what the university's budget was, and then they also looked at what they anticipate some of the students spending from the students that are here in our community. They do some multiplier effects on the right-hand side of that page. They give you some definitions of how the economists interpreted these numbers. And you can see then at the bottom kind of what the overall impact is of the university in our community. So I think that's something that oftentimes we're asked, and I know as city council members, you're asked about the impact of not only that sales tax scholarship that we have here at Northwestern, but what our faculty and staff and our students contribute, both through dollar impacts, as well as just the investment in our community through civic programs and church activities, and the different things that our employees do outside of their jobs at the university. So again, we thank you for your support of our scholarship program, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you might have.
Council have any questions? Well, thank you both gentlemen for coming and presenting today, and it's always an easy decision to, when we come time to take our vote in the council and authority meeting. So thank you again. Next item is the acknowledge receipt of DEQ permit number SL 000076190253 for the construction rehabilitation of one lift station with two 130 GPM submersible pumps and all appurtenances to serve the city of Alba, Woods County, Oklahoma. This is standard acknowledgement for when we get the DEQ permits to move forward with our projects. This is going to be for the Skyline Lift Station, correct?
Correct. That project is already bid out. We should receive bids on the 5th of June, be able to accept them very soon after that.
So if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'd motion to acknowledge the receipt of DEQ permit number SL 000076190253 for construction rehabilitation of one lift station with two 130 GPM submersible pumps and all appurtenances to serve the city of Alba, Woods County, Oklahoma.
Had a motion by Bo Haniford, sent by Brian Wallace, to acknowledge the receipt of the DEQ permit as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item 10 is discussion in action on Resolution 2019-003, authorizing participation in economic development incentive EDI grant program. This has been something that's been worked on by staff and the Economic Development Committee for a while now, and we're, the grant is $5,000, up to $5,000 to match for any local businesses that are going to be doing their, or improvements at their place of business. Upgrade the appearance of their buildings, signage, maybe even doors and windows and stuff like that. So the, like I said, it is up to $5,000. The business can spend whatever they want to spend, but will only match up to $5,000. And I'm happy to, Joe Don, is there anything else we can answer questions, if council has any?
We anticipate in next year's budget for this to be 10 businesses. We anticipate in next year's budget for this to be ten businesses to get a grant each for a total of fifty thousand dollars.
I do know that there are three businesses that I've been in contact with, they're excited about the opportunity, probably will see some applications come in very quick. If there aren't any questions, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to pass a resolution two thousand and nineteen dash zero zero three authorizing the participation in the Economic Development Incentive E D I Grant Program.
Sir. Have a motion by Bo Haniford, second by Randy Stelling, to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash zero zero three authorizing participation in the Economic Development Incentive Grant Program. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item eleven is discussion in action to engage Angel Johnston and Blazing Game P C to conduct the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, City of Alva and Alva Trust Authority audits for an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty.
This is the fifth year of our agreement with Angel Johnston and Blessington. They've been doing us a real good job. They did give us a five-year bid quote for the amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. But it is a, we're recommending the approval of this, and they're real good to work with, they've been real good with staff, they've been working on, they've given us timely audits for everything that we've got. Don't really have any issues with, don't have any issues with them at all. We've enjoyed working with them as much as you can enjoy your financial life.
Is there any discussion or questions? Not I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to engage Angel Johnston and Blessington P C to conduct the F Y two thousand and twenty City of Alva and Alva Trust Authority audits for an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Sir. Have a motion by Bo Haniford, second by Randy Stelling, to engage Angel Johnston and Blazing Game P C to conduct the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audits for nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item twelve is discussion in action on the reappointment of Mrs. Kelsey Martin to the Red Carpet Country Association Board. The Red Carpet Country Association strives to have a board member from each of our counties in the jurisdiction. Kelsey's been serving in that position for Woods County, and it's time to, her term is up, so she is willing to be reappointed, so I'm recommending that appointment. I'm happy to answer any questions if I might be able to, or entertain a motion.
I'd be delighted to reappoint Mrs. Kelsey Martin to the Red Carpet Country Association Board.
Second. Have a motion by Randy Stelling, second by Chris Eckhart, to reappoint Kelsey Martin to the Red Carpet Country Association Board. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Item thirteen, discussion in action on the appointment of Mrs. Kimberly-Baw to the Alva Hospital Authority for a term ending October twenty twenty. Steve Ward had, and this is an expired term for Steve Ward, who has moved outside the city limits. Hospital board members are required to reside within the city limits, with the exception of the Chief of Staff. But with Steve moving outside of the city, Kim was recommended to him by Danny Winters, and someone he's worked with, the name of her experience in healthcare finance with her previous career positions. Had a chance for her to meet with Hospital Authority Chairman as well as C E O, and they've had, you know, quite a few conversations, and so they're on board with the recommendation of her to fill Steve's spot. And so then, therefore, that is my recommendation, that Kim Baw be appointed to that position. I'll entertain a motion or answer any questions.
Make a motion to appoint Miss Kim, Kim Baw to the Alva Hospital Authority for a term ending October two thousand and twenty.
Sir. Have a motion by Bo Haniford, second by Randy Stelling, to appoint Kim Baw to the Alva Hospital Authority for a term ending October twenty twenty. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
And item fourteen, as Chris mentioned in his report, of the discussion in action on the appointment of April Ridgeway to the Library Board for a term ending June twenty twenty-two. Dr. Kevorvik has resigned from his long-term position on that board, and I had an opportunity to visit with Sandra at the library as well as April regarding to April filling this position. Seems that April is definitely interested in serving. She has, you know, been a user of the library for quite some time and with her family and as well as others. I know she's been the robotics coach for the Alva Robotics Team, and I know they use the library for some stuff there as well. I then recommend April Ridgeway to have that unexpired term that ends in June twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion to appoint April Ridgeway to the Alva Public Library Board for a term ending June twenty twenty-two.
Sir. All right. Have a motion by Chris Eckhart, second by Brian Wallace, to appoint April Ridgeway to the Alva Public Library Board for a term ending in June twenty twenty-two. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item fifteen is discussion in action to enter into executive session pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven B two to discuss contract negotiations with I A F F Local thirty-seven eighty-two, Alva, Oklahoma. entertain a motion.
Make a motion to enter into executive session.
Sir. Have a motion by Bo Haniford, second by Randy Stelling, to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Item is action on negotiations with the fire department, there is no action to be taken at this time. Item eighteen, to adjourn. So we will adjourn this meeting and open the special meeting of the Alva Utility Authority. Item two is roll call. Please call the roll.
Winters? Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton? Stelling?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Sherman? Haniford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item four is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at N U A meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration in action on the following items. Item A is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Item B is approval of claims in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-six cents, and payroll expenses of sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd be able to approve the consent agenda.
Sir. Have a motion by Randy Stelling, second by Bo Haniford, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right, we'll adjourn the Alva Utility Authority Special Meeting and open the Alva Economic Development Authority Special Meeting. We're ready to adjourn, please call the roll.
Winters? Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton? Stelling?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Sherman? Haniford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item four is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at A E D A meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration in action on the following items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Approval of claims in the amount of fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-five cents, and payroll expenses of eighteen thousand, sixty-seven dollars and three cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sir. Have a motion by Brian Wallace, and second by Randy Stelling, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item six is discussion in action on the payment of the Northwestern Foundation's invoice for the two thousand and nineteen spring semester scholarship billing in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. Is there a motion to approve the payment?
I do. We've approved the payment to N W O S U Foundation invoice, the two thousand and nineteen spring semester scholarship billing in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-three cents.
Sir. Have a motion by Randy Stelling, second by Brian Wallace, to approve the payment of the Northwestern Foundation's invoice of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Thank you all for making yourselves available for this special meeting. We are adjourned.